Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Common Council of the City of Marshfield. Today is Tuesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Fire. Rachel.
Here.
Rosendich.
Here.
Argander.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Witzel.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Barrels.
Here.
Hattke.
Here.
Henler.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment, period. At this time, the council president will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the council president, persons may address the council, first stating their name and address. The council may act on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Is there anybody in the public that wish to address? I'll start over here. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bozinski. I live at eighteen thirteen West Fifth Street in Marshfield. So a year ago, I stood here, about a year ago, stood here speaking for my neighbors' concern of fifty-eight tiny homes being built behind our house. During this process, it is when it was so clear to me and so obvious to me, the split of our city government, how certain members treated citizens and their peers with such disrespect, and how little I felt when I was feeling like I was wasting their time speaking about a neighborhood issue. So I would like to reread what I said a few meetings ago as the whole neighbor thing is what led me to understanding city government, knowing who my alderman is, and becoming involved in the last year. So I would like to reread what I said a few meetings back at the common council member, I'm sorry, the meeting before the removal of the mayor. So I read, "I'm here tonight to speak for myself and for others in the community that want to show the support for the mayor, the mayor I voted for, who I believe has done an amazing job. I would also like to discuss my concerns of a divided council. In watching and being part of multiple meetings, the division within the council is unacceptable. I've witnessed council members' body language, whispering between members, snide comments, and disrespectful words towards other members, as well as towards the mayor. To me, this is inappropriate and unprofessional. What was more disappointing is watching the exact same inappropriate non-professionalism directed to the community members that had enough courage to stand up and voice their concern. So I ask for myself and for anyone else who may speak tonight, please respect people's opinions. This is our right and our time to speak at these meetings. I would love to see this with eyes open rather than rolling eyes. Marshfield needs to continue growing and healing as a community. Our council should be known as the Marshfield Common Council, not the Marshfield Divided Council." So that is what I read. And after the removal of the mayor, I read this binder full of open records. And I know now more than ever how much backstabbing and conspiracy has taken place in our city government, and it's unacceptable. We need to get together and make the city work, united, not divided. I believe a lot of what I read in here prevented the mayor from doing his job. And I'm going to end it with saying, I believe we owe our mayor and his family members a huge apology. It's unbelievable what I read in here and the disrespect that our government has towards each other. I mean, the citizens I can put between each other. You guys have to start getting along. Unforgivable.
Penker.
Good evening. William Penker, six hundred Sycamore Avenue. My comments will be related to the minutes from the meetings on February nine, March nine, and the public comment presented at the council meeting on March thirty. The last time I was here, I noted, "We have seen and heard individuals focused on issues related to the police department and the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners use the citizen comment period to express their views and concerns. Whether observers support their expressions, reject them, or remain neutral, I suggest we should commend the individuals. They came here, put forth their views and concerns, and placed a name and face with them. I again commend them. Their comments have provided a revealing perspective. I again commend the common council for the manner in which you have received comments, especially those of the meeting on March thirty. You have been heroic in that effort. I will leave it to others to decide if the comments directed to you were, to use some examples, righteous, deserved, broadly based, sincere, fact-based, or, using some other examples, were the comments directed to you nasty, vicious, uncalled-for, demeaning, or vendetta-driven. Having heard and read the comments, I challenge the concerned citizens. If you are so angry, agitated, and at odds with the common council and the Police and Fire Commission, if you believe we need better government, stop the repetitive complaints, establish a platform, seek support, and run for a seat on the common council. Do not expend your time and effort looking for the missing period, the misplaced comma, and the undotted I. If your words are true, if you can clearly define the starting point of your anger and agitation, if you can present a platform that is community-oriented rather than one which is a single issue, get rid of the Police and Fire Commission and the alderman who voted to dismiss the mayor. Supporters will be there. You must, however, answer several questions before you start a political effort. By your words and action, how many people did you attract to your cause? By words and action, how many people did you drive away from your cause? By words and action, have you established credibility or have you damaged your credibility? And last, will your political efforts be viewed as a movement for better government or a vendetta against those with whom you disagree? Thank you very much."
Thank you. Any other?
Young lady Beck.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Shroel. I live at three ten Wisconsin Avenue here in Marshfield. I have been watching the meetings for a little over a year now and would like to address our council and fellow residents. I'm fourteen years old, so I'm not old enough to vote or run for office. Therefore, the adults of Marshfield make most decisions about our city form. First, to our elected officials, it can't be easy to come here and have people come up to this podium every week just to yell at you for doing your job. I appreciate the time you give to the city and its residents. I watched the mayor hearing, and I know that wasn't an easy decision to make. To the fellow citizens of Marshfield, yes, we do have a right to come up here and speak and have different opinions, but please be respectful when doing so. No name-calling. While we all have the right to freedom of speech, we also have a responsibility to be respectful. One last thing I would just like to remind the council, the decisions you make will impact whether my generation will want to come back from Marshfield and raise our families here. As my cross-country coach likes to say, "The fishbowl is real. People are watching." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Berg.
As some of you know, later on in the meeting, there's going to be a discussion about the mask requirement here at City Hall, whether or not to continue it now that the state Supreme Court has struck down the governor's mask mandate and different cities are having discussions about that. I got an email about this at one forty-six this afternoon from someone who said they couldn't be here, but they did want to express their view. I apologize. It's a little bit long, but I think it needs to be read, so I'm going to go through it. "Hello, Steve. I hope this reaches you in time for it to be read by my request before the common council at tonight's meeting, during which they plan to discuss lifting the mask requirement in city buildings, which I assume also includes ending the requirement that city employees wear them, regardless of their position. I plan to be there in person to exercise my right to voice my opinion, but has something pressing come up tonight. Please honor my request as a citizen of this community and have someone read it before the council members, or at the very least forward it to them before the meeting so they have time to consider it. My name is Jamie Kaiser. I've been a Marshfield citizen since nineteen eighty-four. I'm two months away from turning the age of fifty. I both endured and enjoyed living in this area for the past thirty-seven years. I say endured because in my observation, there is very little to do in Marshfield for those not into parks or hanging out at taverns. However, I gratefully and proudly use the term enjoyed because I met my wife here and we've created a wonderful family together. For those of you who are not familiar with me, I've enjoyed the honor of contributing to my community by serving as a police officer for the past nine and a half years and counting. I'll openly admit that when it comes to book knowledge, I lag behind. I put just enough effort into school to graduate in nineteen eighty-nine and only pursued further education at the age of thirty-eight because I lost two jobs in the mid-two thousands due to the struggling economy caused by the tragic events of nine eleven. However, in my opinion, there is no substitute for life experience, which I possess a master's degree in. I have seen and witnessed many things in my life, things that might cause the average person to cringe or crumble, but I survived and have many great lessons to share because of it, in my opinion. Life experience is more valuable than anything one can learn from any book other than the Bible. The reason I share these things about myself is to set the stage in regard to what qualifies me to voice my opinion on the matter at hand. The funny thing is, however, that when it comes to the idea of whether you or anyone else has the right to mandate that everyone wear masks because some are afraid, one only has to consider that we are intelligent, free Americans, and no one has the right to make health decisions for others. In my adult lifetime, I have never heard of, nor could I ever comprehend, the idea that someone should or could make decisions about my health. Sure, there are certain cases where certain individuals have been deemed mentally incapable of making those decisions, whether because they are children or they are adults who suffer from a mental illness. I think it's insane that we're even debating this in an otherwise free society. But before I get too deep into my personal insights on masks, I will share my professional thoughts. As a police officer, and perhaps some of you have heard this happening, I've been assigned to several disturbance calls of confrontations between people wearing masks, people who disagree on wearing masks. As law enforcement, we have the responsibility to mitigate risk in a variety of circumstances. When a rule is initiated, such as in this case of a mask mandate, it gives those who believe in it a basis to protest against those who don't. After all, they have the entire city behind them because the administrators voted for it. Coincidentally, in my observation, it's been those who believe in masks and who have been the instigators, where the non-mask wearers want to just be left alone in peace and freedom. I've personally been verbally attacked for not wearing a mask off-duty by those who apparently thought their beliefs were more important than mine, one of which actually brought up the city mandate in their argument, so I know firsthand that it happens. Conversely, when you leave it up to personal choice, I believe it limits the number of potential confrontations because there's no leg to stand on when there's no rule or mandate in place to support the argument. So far, to my knowledge, these confrontations have been only verbal. However, as time goes by, I fear that an extended mandate opens up our community to more confrontations, and heaven forbid, those develop into physical altercations. I believe that extending the mask mandate will ultimately lead to more confrontations. For thousands of years, human evolution and Mother Nature have done just fine without our interference, with the obvious exception of certain diseases for which we have unfortunately not discovered a cure for yet. I've been sick many times in my life, at least once, but sometimes even twice a year, and not once have I feared illness, as I understand it as a natural part of life, and my immune system continues to do what it was designed to do and what nature intended it to do. But now, almost literally overnight, those in power have taken it upon themselves to be self-proclaimed rulers of my health. It seems we have taken that evolution and thrown it out the window based on the mere conjecture of one man. I spent the last eight months lobbying against our governor's illegal executive orders requiring masks, and just when I began to think freedom might just win this time, I have to deal with local administrators considering mandating that I continue to do something that goes against everything I believe in. The day after the city mask mandate was initiated last year, I sat in former chief Rick Grams's office to voice my displeasure to him about it. Obviously, public opinion of him was different at the time. I told him that requiring me to participate in wearing a mask and projecting the false image that I agree with it is like telling me not to believe in God. That's how strong my feelings are about it. He proceeded to tell me the statement was far-fetched, or my statement was far-fetched, and in paraphrasing words told me I had to suck it up for the greater good. You see, there's a huge difference between happily and proudly doing something you believe in and being forced to do something you don't believe in. In a million lifetimes, I would never require that someone else do something, whether they believe in it or not, in order for me to feel safe, a word that has been grossly overused in the past fourteen months. If someone feels scared and nervous to drive on the freeway because of all the high-speed traffic, we don't make everyone else stay off the freeway so that person can feel safe to drive on it. Generally speaking, the same should apply to wearing masks. Wear one if you're scared, but don't force it on others who are not afraid or simply don't believe in it. It boggles my mind that after all we've been through the past fourteen months, how long we've passed our local spike in cases that occurred in November, that we still have to deal with the idea that the mask requirement might actually be extended. I don't want to get into an entire debate over statistics and whether or not masks have helped at all. Although I recognize my personal opinion is most likely shining through, don't even get me started on the hypocrisy involved in the precautions. However, I wouldn't be able to sleep tonight if I didn't at least say that I now have more mask, have known more mask wearers who have contracted COVID than non-mask wearers. And I've heard others say the same thing. Take that for what it's worth. None of that matters because the statistics are not what's on the table here. Our freedom is. I truly believe that once you cross the line of forcing others to do anything that, as much as resembles, attempted control of the health, and technically, that line has already been crossed, then there would be, there would appear to be no limit to what government can do to control people. I will close by saying, if you believe in freedom, you unanimously and emphatically end the mask mandate. Perhaps more important, if you still believe in the idea that our government was founded on godly principles, you will end it and at least allow the chance to return to normal. Thank you for considering my voice. And again, it was a lengthy letter, but I was asked to read this today. It's by Jamie Kaiser.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Becky Hebner-Lu, and I reside at thirteen thirteen East Twenty-Sixth Street. In reviewing months and months of text message communication between ex-police chief Rick Gramsa and the Police and Fire Commission President Randy Gershman, it is very clear that their relationship was not just friendly, it was that of being friends. An unhealthy, dangerous relationship for a supervisor and a subordinate, for sure. There is a definite difference between being friendly and being friends. Friendly is exchanging pleasantries. "Any plans for the weekend? How's your wife doing?" Friends, having a friend relationship is very different. Friends do favors for each other, they keep secrets, and they do things and say things that would never be said or done in a professional, public setting. In the text messages I reviewed, I saw examples of name-calling and disrespect of multiple city officials. I saw examples of favors and other topics that would never be discussed during monthly PFC meetings or with commissioners or before the public. Shouldn't the relationship be business-driven and professional? That's a rhetorical question. Of course it should. The PFC should have increased their meetings to accommodate the apparent frequent needs of the police chief and Randy Gershman. It is very clear that because of their friend relationship, Gershman was not holding Gramsa accountable for any of his actions. How can anyone expect that he will hold the next chief accountable if this type of relationship, this is the type of relationship he called this?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jim Hiller, ten eleven East Grant Street. I want to thank the other speakers because that's what makes America great. We have different opinions, and we have the right to voice those opinions. I'm sorry if I hurt anybody's feelings on this council the last time I spoke, but I'm assuming that you all have thick skin, or you should have thick skin. I'm here tonight because you have some very important decisions to make. One is to determine if the council remove, will remove Police and Fire Commissioners, Gershman, and Keeg. Another will be, who is appointed as the new commissioners? The only option now is to suspend the rules of appointment until a legal decision can be obtained. At best, Gershman and Keeg should have no voting power or authority on the commission. It is my belief that the commission can still function with three members if necessary. We have been told that we might need to have another common council dog and pony show to have them removed. This would be unproductive, as we saw with the mayor. If we are forced to go that route, I can assure you that we, the group, will have legal representation. But you can take action tonight under emergency rules to vote on matters that have a detrimental effect on the city. And you should. You also have the important decisions concerning the mayor's position. Should you appoint someone? And if so, who? The citizens are watching your next move. The citizens are very upset that you used some type of legal loophole to get rid of our mayor in the first place. And now we're concerned that you're going to use that same type of legal loophole to replace him. We will elect our next mayor. We should have been the one to get rid of the mayor. We should have been the one to get rid of the mayor. But as we have wit- witnessed recently, you don't really care what the public thinks. The public needs to be reminded that a complaint has been filed with law enforcement concerning possibly legal activities conducted by seven aldermen sitting on this council and the two commissioners that I mentioned. During the, or during law enforcement, during the law enforcement investigation, should we allow these nine individuals to make any legal decisions concerning our city? Is it ethical, moral, or legally correct? Could our common council be run by three aldermen until a legal determination is made? I think so. The Wood County Board years ago never thought it would survive when they chopped one half of their board members, but it has. Open records have shown, and this has been mentioned previous, have shown aldermen, police and fire commissioners, and department heads demeaning other elected officials, citizens, and city employees. Their name-calling, especially towards the mayor, the little cl- glitches and little pacts is something that you would expect from middle schoolers, not officials of the city. It's amazing the very close relationships that certain police and fire commissioners, aldermen, and even a local news outlet add with former police chief. A special bond that wasn't healthy to a fair and impartial division between the political supervisory board, news reporting, and the police chief. No wonder it was so easy for the chief to terminate three employees and then force another employee out because of on-duty injuries. This council, the Police and Fire Commission, and certain department heads have become unfocused to the reality of what's really happening in Marshfield. Citizens aren't reaching out to their aldermen, but actually, they're starting to talk to the concerned citizens of Marshfield group members. Is it necessary to form a committee to oversee our elected officials and department heads? If so, do we need a common council and elected aldermen? You can start the community healing tonight. Either call for a special election to allow the citizens to elect their next mayor, or allow their position to remain vacant until next April, and we'll elect our next mayor. Anything else will verify the collusion to get rid of the mayor and appoint your chosen person. The council should also suspend fire and police commissioner Gershman and Keeg until the investigation has concluded, and a legal determination is made if they violated any city policy, state law, or if they committed any illegal acts. This council owes the citizens a temporary reprieve until those determinations are made. The ball's in your court. The next move is yours. Choose wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Second call for comments from the public? And a third call for any comments from the public? Okay, seeing no more. Item D, approve. Approval of minutes from March thirty, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. Motion by Mr. Wagner. Second by Mr. Paschal. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
That passes, thank you. Staff updates? None? Okay. Letter F, council president's comments. Just like to remind council members that Amy is looking for any of your requests for committee assignments. She's looking for that by tomorrow, so if you haven't yet turned that in, please get that to her. I also would like to take a moment to recognize Mr. Bargender's work on the council for the last two years. I know that he and I have not always seen eye to eye in a lot of things, but it's been my pleasure to work with you for the last two years, and I thank you for your service during those two years. Next, council comments. Mr. Bargender.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people that voted for me in the last election. Their support has, has been invaluable to me. I'd also like to thank individuals that called after the elections, sent me cards. More cards today. Wish, wish me well in my future endeavors. You are true patriots. This being my last council meeting, I'd like to recognize my fellow council people that I serve with, and some of the staff members. So bear with me, it's going to take a little bit. Start with Peter. Peter's our most senior council member. Senior meaning the oldest. He is the most spunkiest eighty-year-old guy I have ever met. Peter has been a role model, and I deeply respect him. Peter, thank you for the fourteen years of service on the common council. Tom Buckey. Wow. It would take me over an hour to tell you all the great things that Tom has done for our city. If I were to give him a title, it would be Mr. Ambassador. Tom spreads goodwill about our city every place he goes. Tom, I thank you for the twenty-one years of service on the common council. Rebecca Spiros. If I had one word to describe Rebecca, it would be dedication. She is extremely dedicated to her husband, her children, and her grandchildren. She is also very dedicated to the hospice patients she cares for. Rebecca, thank you for the eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of Marshfield. You are my queen. Adam Fisher. It is mind-boggling to me how you do all the things you do. You serve on the common council at the same time you serve on the Wood County Board of Supervisors. All, all while you're operating your own business, being a, being a great father to four young children and a dedicated husband. Adam, you are a special person. And a inspiration to me. Thank you for your service. Tom Whitso. The old saying says, the old saying goes, when it, when it, things get tough, the tough get going. You have been, you have more than proven that to us in these past few months. You are a very, you are a very professional leader and care deeply about our city. I will forever respect what you have done for us. From the bottom of my heart, thank you. Ed Wagner. To Ed, serving on the common council and the Wood County Board of Supervisors is not just a part-time job. It is a full-time job. Ed spends hours and hours preparing for all the meetings he attends. I know sometimes he even outwits our city officials. If you want to know anything about local government, Ed is the, Ed is the go-to guy. Ed, thanks for all your hard work. Thank you. Quentin Rosenbich. Quentin is our newest council member, serving just one year of, of his two-year term. I know that the past twelve months haven't exactly been what you expected. When you chose to be on the council, when you chose to be on the council, the only thing I can say is hang in there and be strong. Thank you for your service. Nick, you're up. Nick, when it comes to council, you're all business, and you always conduct yourself professionally. When Nick speaks on, at council meetings, I listen closely, because I know everything he says is well thought out ahead of time. Nick, thank you for being our second alder, second district alderman, and for all the years you served our citizens as a police officer. Mike Fire, last but not least. Mike, if I had, if I had to define public servant, I would only have to say one name, Mike Fire. For decades, Mike has done great things for our community. Most recently, he has dedicated himself to help build the Marshfield History Museum, located under the Senior slash Community Center. Just wait till you see what Mike has done. You will be amazed. Mike, thank you for twenty-one years of service on the common council. I guess I forgot some of my notes, but I, I know what they are. I never regret being on the common council. All of my decisions have always, I felt, been in the best interest of the citizens and taxpayers of the city of Marshfield. I felt that I've honorably served the citizens, and who knows in the future what, what I'll do for you. Thank you very much.
Any other council comments? Okay, seeing none. Letter H, reports from commissions, boards, and committees. Any reports from commissions, boards, and committees? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to I, the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to receive and place on file approving all recommended items on the consent agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Mr. Buckey. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Right. That passes. Nothing was removed, so we'll move on to letter K, second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-three, municipal code amendment, request by Scott Stifler to amend chapter eighteen dash thirty-five sub-three and chapter eighteen dash sixty sub-three of the Marshfield Municipal Code, presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Council President. So the applicant is requesting to amend the zoning code to allow for personal storage facilities in the CMU District, which is the community mixed-use zoning district, and this would be as a conditional use. The applicant is also requesting to add some regulations that would limit the facilities to be interior-oriented, and that all individual storage units shall be accessed from the interior of the building. So overall, staff is open to the idea of allowing storage units in the commercial district, but we would highly recommend that if this land use is allowed, it is only located within a existing commercial building. And the main reason is to, well, there's two main reasons, to maintain the aesthetic integrity in our busiest commercial corridor, and also to preserve some of our more valuable commercial land. The Plan Commission was generally supportive of this request with the proposed, or, sorry, with the proposed regulations as listed in the ordinance. The staff report goes into a lot more detail, but since this is a second reading, the recommended action is to approve ordinance number fourteen fifty. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? By Mr. Fire, second. Mr. Wagner? Any discussion? Mr. Wagner?
Bryce, you were talking about it can be for indoor storage only?
Correct.
In, in this district, there, so they wouldn't allow anybody to park their boat or their RV alongside it, it would have to be inside storage?
Correct. So it's basically storage units that would only be located inside of a building.
Storage units that would be located inside the?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion on this council? Okay, seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Hemler?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
That passes.
Letter L, second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-four, municipal code amendment requested by City Marshfield to amend sections eighteen dash fifty-seven sub-seven and sub-eight of the Marshfield Municipal Code, again presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we are proposing to consider pumphouses, wellhouses, and lift stations as essential services land use. This way that they are, this way, those land uses would be exempt from setback requirements, bulk density requirements, and intensity requirements. So it's pretty similar to the current land use that it's currently considered. However, this just makes sure that if we ever do have to update and replace necessary infrastructure, that way we don't have to worry about certain setback burdens, which would then potentially cause taxpayers, you know, more for fixing those issues. So it's probably just best if it's considered as such, essential land use. So with that, the second reading, this is the second reading, and the recommended action is to approve ordinance number fourteen fifty-four.
I have a motion by Mr. Buckey to approve this action. Me, second. And Mr. Rosenbich, any discussion? Is that a hand up, Mrs. Spiros? Okay.
No.
All right. Any discussion? All right, roll call, vote please.
Hemler?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Right. That passes. Nothing was removed, so we'll move on to letter K, second reading of ordinance number fourteen fifty-three, municipal code amendment, request by Scott Stifler to amend chapter eighteen dash thirty-five sub-three and chapter eighteen dash sixty sub-three of the Marshfield Municipal Code, presented by Bryce Hembrook, City Planner.
Thank you. So we're currently in the process of forming a tip district, and all the subject properties would be located in that tip district. In order to be complying with state statutes, all of the properties would have to be zoned for industrial use. The land is located in the General Industrial District as designated in the future land use map in the comprehensive plan, and for, you know, the last few decades, it's been used for agricultural purposes. The General Industrial District allows for a variety of industrial and commercial activities. Those are all listed in the staff report. Other subject properties comprise of roughly one hundred and twenty-five acres, and this would provide additional industrial land within city limits. This is a second reading, unless the recommended action is to approve ordinance number fourteen fifty-five. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hemler, that's a motion to approve, second by Mr. Fire. Seeing none, roll call, vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitso?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Beryl's?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Hemler?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Letter N, request to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven to permit an exception to section nine dash forty-six sub-one of the Marshfield Municipal Code with respect to open container restrictions for the Mackey pub crawl on Saturday, May first, presented by Pat Zeps, Acting Police Chief.
All right, good evening. I come to you again with another request for an exemption to the open container. Just a little bit of a recap, in twenty nineteen, we approved five of these, or the common council did. Those included the United Way Wine Walk, Hub City Day, Central Wisconsin State Fair, Main Street Marshfield Beer Walk, and the Main Street Holiday, or the Main Street Marshfield Holiday Wine Walk. We really didn't have any problems to speak of, and two weeks ago, we approved another one of those wine walks. And so tonight, the Marshfield Area Chamber of Commerce and Industry is hosting a Derby Day Pub Crawl that's going to take place on Saturday, May first, from eleven thirty AM to four forty-five PM, and that event's going to occur on Central Avenue. What you'll notice when you read through this is the geographical area that we're looking for, for the exemption, is from Deggie Street South to Ninth. There are two businesses that wouldn't be included. One is on the extreme north, that's the lumberyard, and the other one is on the west side, which is Libby McNeil's. So what we're requesting is the ordinance prohibiting the possession or drinking of alcoholic beverages in public places, be temporarily suspended from Deggie Street South to Ninth Street, on Central Avenue, with one block both to the east and west of Central Avenue, from eleven thirty AM to five fifteen PM on Saturday, May first, to accommodate this event. Again, there has been no issues with any of these events. It's actually proven to be quite popular and relaxed, and the on-duty police will be monitoring the area. I do have Scott Larson from Mackey here, if you have any additional questions on this one, because the geographical area is just, is just a little bit different than veterans down to Ninth. So with that, I'd be happy to take any other questions or... So with that, I'd be happy to take any other questions or defer to Scott.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Buttke to approve, second by Mr. Fire. Discussion? Mr. Wagner. Mike, microphone?
Okay. How are you planning on dealing with people crossing the parkway?
We would just expect that they would use the crosswalks like, you know, any other, anybody else. And, you know, a lot of that's going to be up to them if they choose to, how far they choose, they choose to, excuse me, how far south they choose to walk.
I'm a little troubled by that, but I'd like to see some kind of supervision with that sort of. I don't know, I don't know if that's something that you guys can, can deal with operationally or not.
Yeah, you know, one of the things to throw out is that, given the time of day, typically there's not a really large bar crowd. And, and I actually went down and watched the beer walk that they had a year ago, October, very low-key. I think the amounts that typically you're seeing are smaller amounts that are being poured in the glass as provided. So, you know, I haven't seen a lot of problems on that area. So, but again, we have lieutenants who are going to be aware of this, the on-duty shift lieutenants, and they'll definitely let the on-duty patrol know to monitor the area. If you can swim, Scott?
All right, any other questions or discussion? I guess I have one question. With two of these being outside the designated area, I'm a little concerned with people carrying their beverage to their car. And then, you know, what happens once they get to their cars, if their beverage still has something in it, whether they're driving to one of these, you know, out locations, is there an empty container sitting in the car, are they trashing, you know, they just throw it to the side so it's not in the car? I guess that's the other concern that I would have regarding, especially those outliers.
Right. That was a concern of mine, too, and Scott and I talked through that. The other option was to include all of Central. Again, I think you run the risk of someone getting into a car at that point, because now they're in an area where they think they can have an open container, take the path of least resistance, hop in a car and drive from one to the other. So by, by limiting that, the hope is that they'll stay there, finish whatever beverage they have, and then get in the car and then go into the area where they can have that open beverage. But again, all statutes and laws, ordinances would be in place. Someone chooses to violate that and they get stopped, they're going to be culpable for having an open container in their car.
And with that in mind, the same thing could happen with simply driving from the north end of the open container area to the south end of the existing open container, or proposed, I should say, open container area.
Correct. I would not be in a position to say that that couldn't happen.
Is there going to be, are there going to be any instructions provided to the participants that warn them of those types of?
Correct.
Any other discussion questions? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Hemmler?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Burrows?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Wagner?
No.
Argander?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Faschal?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Passes eight to two. Thank you. Letter O, discuss providing city email accounts for certain boards and commissions, presented by Steve Vars, city administrator.
Thank you. Back in September of 2019, the council had a presentation, there were many people here from our committees, commissions, and boards as well, talking about some issues that deal with, you know, public sector stuff, such as open meetings, public records, ethics, and the kind of things of that nature that you have in public service. This was a gentleman who was skilled at doing this, he, again, from UW Stevens Point, and had made that presentation to others. He answered some questions as well. At that time, the idea came up, would it make sense, would it be possible to extend city email accounts to members of our committees, boards, and commission? After that meeting, there was some discussion, eventually it came back to the council in January of 2020, and the council voted not to go there. Some of the things involved are in the memo that you have tonight, talking about the cost that would be incurred by extending city email accounts to members of our committees, boards, and commissions, also the fact that our IT staff would be involved in servicing some of these things and would have more questions and calls to deal with. Recently, it was brought to my attention again that this would be something we should look at, whether or not people who agree to serve on our committees, boards, and commissions should have city email accounts to keep their private email separate from city for a couple reasons. One, because in fact, you know, they don't want their private email accounts brought into this when there's open records requests and some of these things. And another, because it would just seem to be that a way that they could do business, they interact once in a while with staff liaisons and those types of individuals about their roles with the city. So take a look at it, this is my, my opinion, it may seem like splitting hairs, but I'm going to fire away at this. I don't know that it's necessary that all of our committees, boards, and commissions should have city email accounts. Maybe you can make an argument for that, but the cost and the impact on our IT department, I don't think is warranted. For the most part, you know, the interaction ought to be limited between, you know, getting agendas by email and maybe interacting with the staff liaison. There really shouldn't be a lot going on apart from the meetings. Having said that, our boards and commissions, several of our boards and commissions have significant authority apart from this body, apart from the council, that they have statutorily or by city code. And therefore, they're making decisions that are, in many cases, permanent decisions per se. So I think it would be worthwhile for us to look at extending city email accounts to those groups, to those individuals on those bodies. So I'm looking tonight to see if you would agree, if so, we can bring this back as a policy for you to consider and laying out who those boards and commissions should be. But it'd be based on the idea that not everyone needs it, but those who have that specific authority as part of that body that goes beyond or is apart from this council probably should have some protection for some of the things they might encounter in emails. And also, it'd be easier for us to be able to retrieve when we have, you know, open meetings, or I'm sorry, open records requests. So that's my recommendation. I put it out tonight just simply for discussion by the body.
Okay, any thoughts or ideas? Mr. Buttke?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement, Steve. I would like more information for you to bring back and us to look at.
Okay. Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you. I like the idea. I think the idea of having a separation between the private and the public is a special thing to do. I can see where Plan Commission perhaps might have the need for doing that, Plan Commissioners. The newly created Ethics Board would definitely have a need for this, at least because I think a lot of their, a lot of their hearings are held in closed session. So I think maybe if there's any chat between them, it should be recorded, it should be an archived list for that, if that happens. Those are, excuse me, those are the two I think of immediately. Did you have any others in mind?
Well, you know, the, I thought maybe the Utilities Commission, although they have their own separate email server now, that they have their own email accounts for their members. Fire and Police Commission certainly comes to mind. A border review has been talked about, you know, they have authority in the realm of adjusting property values that is, you know, set forth in state law. So I think those would be some of the bodies we would look at. And again, people who come on those boards and commissions need to know how they have to be maintaining records, how they're, you know, everything is subject to the state law. But I think that keeping bodies at that level apart from their own personal email accounts is probably a good idea.
I agree.
Rosendich?
Thank you. Steve, do we know how other cities around us operate, Bossa Rapids, with that email?
I don't, and that would be a good thing to bring back for the next meeting. And I probably should have checked that before this meeting, to be honest with you. I had the impression once that it was uncommon for cities and villages to extend email accounts to their advisory committees, but, you know, I don't have any data right now to support that. So I could go back to the administrators' network and get a sense of where that's at.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, Mr. Bargender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did support back in 2019 that all commissions, boards, and committees would get city email addresses. It's to protect those members. I mean, and it does create a permanent record. So they're, it's not up to them, okay? If they, they would change gadgets or whatever, you know, they don't have to make sure, okay? And better training. You know, I served 10 years on commissions, boards, and committees prior to being elected in 2019. And I'll be honest with you guys, I had no training in open records, how to handle them, zero training, absolute zero. So it's very, very important, especially nowadays, that we get, we make sure everyone is trained, from people in historical to the Plan Commission to, you know, EDB, everybody needs to be trained in open, open records, how to handle open records. Because, just because you're appointed, that doesn't mean you're exempt. I mean, people think, well, it's just elective officials that, you know, are subject to this. No, 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 no. It's everybody. Everybody has a role in city government, should be trained. So that's something I'd really like to see moving on. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hemmler?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Steve, you're right, we discussed this before. I think Mr. Bargender hit on a very important thing, is the training of everyone that gets on a commission. You know, when you get onto something, you don't know what's going on. But I think in the overall, I think it helps in the transparency of government functioning. Because as you can see, some of the problems have occurred in, in certain areas. So I would encourage that.
I think if I can jump in, those are two very germane comments. We've talked at staff level about the need for more training, not just in this area, but just in general, to understand what your role is. I think it's very, probably normal and natural for somebody who works for the committee, when you come on board, you get caught up in what are the current issues? What are you dealing with? And you want to jump in into the water and start swimming. But are we giving a good foundation as to below those hot button issues that you walk into in April, May, June, July? What are my, you know, what are my responsibilities? What are my expectations? What are my limits? You know, a lot of people are just good citizens that want to get involved, and they really don't know for sure what they're signing up for. So I would encourage, I would respect both Mr. Bargender and Mr. Hemmler on those comments.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you again. One thing that I'm really serious about is that after every election, the League of Municipalities holds a half a day new elected officials boot camp, and they do it in like five area, five regions around the state. I think the city should make it almost mandatory for newly elected officials, mayor all the way down to the, whatever committee you want to call the one on the totem pole, that they should attend that meeting, because that thing is invaluable. I mean, I, when I came back on the council in 2006, I had been out of government for a number of years. And I went to that meeting, and I was amazed at some of the things that I learned about public works and about some of the things, and some of the changes in the open meeting laws, and not on the open meeting, but also on the Freedom of Information Act and all that good stuff. So, I mean, it's, it's worth it, and I, I think any, any new member, whether they're an alderman or an appointee to a committee, should be allowed to go to that, is strongly encouraged to go to that, because it teaches them what the roles and responsibilities are.
I agree, and I think we've been better with elected officials. I think some of you have been through the routine with us when you've come on board, where we've gotten you plugged in to meet with department heads and get caught up on some of the issues, see their equipment, take tours, ask questions, and we tried very hard. I think a couple of you have actually gone to that. Nick, I think, did you go to the 101 player one time? So it's, it's good stuff. It's very good 101 type stuff. And I'll go one step farther with council, too, and I'm getting away from committees for a minute, but, you know, the league canceled almost everything in 2020 because of COVID. But when they fire up again, now they're going to be having conferences, workshops, and seminars. Those are invaluable. And I know some of you have made those, and you might think, well, I've been in government for 20 years, you know, I've been through the mill, I know it all. There's always new laws, there's always new practices and policies, and new, new things that other communities are doing so. But we need to try and rope, you know, commission and committee members into this as much as we can, I agree with.
Any other discussion from the council?
Direction to just keep baking this and come back?
Yeah, it sounds as though there's an interest, at least in some of the committees, if not all. I guess I do have one question, and that would be for the utility. If they're on a totally independent mail server, is that something that would be doable for their commission members as well? And Nick doesn't have to answer that right now, I mean, he can do some baking.
I think I can, if you don't mind, Nick. They already have email accounts set up for commission members, correct?
Okay. Okay, thank you. So you know what you're going to do then, Steve?
Yeah, I've got direction, thanks. Thanks, Tom.
All right. Letter P, discuss the use of Facebook Live for city meetings, presented by Steve Vars, city administrator.
Thank you. I'm not going to go into the long thing that I did last time when I kind of pulled the plug temporarily for discussion on this one. But, you know, I will just briefly say that back in July 19 of 2019, council did authorize use of Facebook Live for city meetings and activities. There were concerns raised about comments being on the screen. I will say that at that time, the biggest concern was in fact, or one of the bigger concerns, was the fact that we didn't have a policy prohibiting you folks up frontier from looking at social media, you know, on your phones or your tablets during the meeting. And the thought was that you might get information that would impact you and how you discussed or voted on a particular issue. But there were just broad, if you watch the tapes, it was broadly stated that there was concern about comments scrolling during the meeting that might be distracting and that those ought to be blocked until after the meetings are over. So anyway, I stopped it based on some, a meeting that we had a couple, a few weeks ago, but I bring it to your discussion now. Facebook Live has certainly improved our viewership, there are people who use Facebook Live a lot, and the more platforms generally, the better. We want to get the word out, we want people watching our meetings and engaging. But like I said, it's come to my attention in talking with Tom and with David in Communications Department, that while they can try, you know, to hide them as they come up, they can't really block them from, from coming through. And when we get a lot of comments, it's pretty hard to hide them. And then there's a question about whether hiding them is even, you know, something we should be doing. So I think you have to assume if you're going to do Facebook Live, from what I understand from Tom, they've tried to find avenues to block the comments, and apparently that's not possible at this point. So if you're going to have Facebook Live for meetings, you're going to have to anticipate scrolling comments potentially coming through. My concern is that that appears to be an online forum, and I don't think that's what we want to promote on our meetings. At the time the meetings are going on, you can watch them on, on our website live, you can watch them on Channel 991 Live if you're a Charter customer. The meetings are broadcast on YouTube right after, a YouTube channel right after the meetings. So I mean, theoretically, you could actually be watching the meeting live on, on our website and communicating on the Facebook page if you have concerns, you know, why is the city considering lifting the mask requirement at City Hall? But it won't be coming up as part of the meeting, the actual meeting that's on the screen of the council, which I think is a better way to go. So at this point, I would take any questions, but my recommendation would be that we continue to not, or we do not use Facebook Live for the actual meetings themselves for that reason.
Mr. Buttke?
My motion would be to not resume use of Facebook Live for city, city meetings.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second by Mr. Hemmler. Discussion? Faschal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't share the same concerns that Steve does about the comments scrolling on the side of the Facebook page. None of us here can see those comments or shouldn't be looking at those comments. And even though there's no way to really stop them, and they serve no real useful purpose for our decision-making, I think that they're, it's a way that people can continue to express their opinions as to what's going on with the city government. I think that we have in place a, a rule here, an ordinance, I think, if it's an ordinance[1688.37] an ordinance, I think, an investment ordinance or just a rule?
Your what?
That we can't be checking our.
It's a policy you adopted, yeah.
Right. A city policy that we are not to be checking those things. And I think that if there are members of the city staff that are making presentations, that they should also not be checking Facebook during the meetings that may influence their presentations before on. But I think that allowing the comments doesn't bother me at all.
Rosenbich?
Thank you. I, I agree with Nick. I think we were asking people to participate. Facebook is a way for them to express their views. Again, we're not supposed to be on there anyway. So I don't think I'm very tech savvy either, but I couldn't find a way to go back and see what all those comments are even after a meeting. I think it promotes them to participate in the meetings in some way, shape or form, now that everybody has 91, 991 on spectrum, nor maybe they can't access the website, they can, but they can get Facebook on their phone. So I think it's a, it's a good avenue for people to be able to voice their opinions, their concerns, even if it is in some kind of more limited fashion that we can't see.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the last two aldermen who spoke. I, I'm going to have to vote against this. I feel very strongly that people have a right to speak. And sometimes they're going to agree. Sometimes we're going to disagree. But at the end of the day, we all have that inherent right to speak our mind. And I think that needs to even happen on a social media platform. And so I think having the council viewed live, you know, I'll be honest, I mean, I know this is the policy, but even if we were viewing the comments, I still have no issue with that. We need to hear from the public. And we need to hear what they have to say. So I will be voting no on this. Thank you.
Mr. Agner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my biggest concern is, are, is there any liability that the city may incur by allowing those comments? And I'd like the, an answer from the city attorney. That's my only concern is, are we protecting the city from any liability? That's not my question.
So when we first brought this up, that was a serious concern to me, that if we have folks that are able to view, be on the council and you're viewing that. And that's where this first began with the policy to restrict the ability to use electronic media while we were on the council. There was exchanges of information, which essentially be violations of open meetings law. So if you're, you were in a situation, I, I think you absolutely have a problem if members of the council have access to comments that are coming in on the content of Facebook Live, partially because this meeting is the place where this meeting is happening. And if people are sharing information in another forum and you're getting access to that information, there's no record of what you got while you were here. That's the other problem with looking at this as people joining in or making comments or participating in this meeting, but they're doing it in a separate platform. That's not happening. What you're doing is sending out two different platforms, one here, and that's being viewed by people on cable television, and then a separate platform, which is really just a social media platform. And the problem with that, to an extent, and I had recommended that we take a look a little bit closer, maybe get some feedback from other communities. It still caused me pause because you have, again, one version of this that's out to anybody here in this meeting. Nobody's seeing these comments. We had a, a moment some time ago where information came out of the meeting that was a misrepresentation. And you're opening, what I'm talking about is somebody commenting and you're just commenting falsely or derogatory. You're opening up a platform for potential concerns in terms of liability issues by the comments that are there. Now, I think we can overcome most of that, but it is a bit of a concern because of the, the, the content that can happen. So in other words, you're here and you're a council member, and someone's out there and they're commenting saying, saying to, in that platform, this information that's being stated at the meeting is wrong, et cetera. So one group of public seeing it that way, and they're seeing the meeting evolve that way with comments and, and commentary that affects the perception of what's going on in that meeting. And yet another group that happened to be on cable television or here, you have no idea of those things going on. Now, they can be reconciled, but the question is, do you want to do that? Are you, are you going to allow two different forums in which that's happening? As far as comments on Facebook, obviously, and I don't know to what extent the city, I guess I haven't even looked at that, whether we have our own Facebook page or whatever, where comments could be done and they could be, you know, basically followed through, but they're not in the context of the meeting itself. So people can comment afterwards and do that in Facebook and you can see it, you can choose, and I'm assuming most of you don't reply to those things. But I mean, that in itself starts leading to open meetings and, and open records concerns when you're doing that. So, and with all the problems that we've had, I'm going to caution you that these things are very, very hard and time consuming to keep your arms around. I'm seeing that at multiple, multiple levels. We're involved in a lot of time by city trying to control that information. We incurred a lot of expenses to try to control that information. And then trying to, when you do get an open records request, respond to it, know, you know, are we getting all of those different platforms? I, I, it's not an absolute illegality. I'm not worried about it in that sense. I think you could probably work your way around. One thing for sure, though, and I didn't say this at the time, there wasn't really a forum. What we were doing was wrong. Okay? So the idea that this council had said we could have Facebook Live as long as we removed the comments, and then we were going down the path of letting it go on, that needed to stop. And so you're here now to decide that. If you're prepared to do it, fine. The other thing would be to either get an analysis of this or, or form a committee to make the decision about it. But you are opening up a completely separate forum for what's going on in Facebook Live, a meeting over here that's happening at this place, and then whatever's happening on cable television. No one's getting that the same is the problem with, with doing what you're talking about.
Mr. Page?
I can agree with some of that. But I, I guess I look at it this way, that years ago, when we had newspapers, there was a thing in the newspaper called a letter to the editor, where people could express their opinions about what occurred at a meeting. Granted, it took a day or two to get that information out, but some people got that information, some people didn't get that information. We're just living in an age now where that information is coming to us instantaneously. I think as long as we are making our decisions not based on any of that feedback, that we are okay. And that we shouldn't worry, or don't worry so much about what the comments are.
Mr. Buckey?
I would like to ask our communication director, Tom Louts, to come up. I, I believe, Tom, there are other avenues where people can put comments in there. So we're not excluding them. There's a lot of good comments here by, by everybody. But if you could, Tom, please.
Just to clarify, does that have to do with just on Facebook or another platform?
Other.
Yeah. We, we can use YouTube. We can stop the comments on YouTube. It is a social media platform. So we have the capabilities of doing that now, if, if you would like that. We use Granicus, like Steve had mentioned earlier, which is a streaming platform that is now on high definition. And it is on our website. We could, in the future here, put it on stream, this meeting on a Roku, Roku, excuse me, Apple TV, and a Fire platform. We could do that as well. So there's another avenue. Again, you can't comment. So all those I mentioned, you would not be able to comment. As I understand now, again, rules change, especially with Facebook. A lot of those rules changed since 2019. They made it more difficult to stop comments. Even back in 2016, 2017, you could, you could eliminate comments in Facebook. You can't. But one thing in Facebook we could do is you can put keywords in and it actually stops comments. Or we could have a set of rules that say that if you do comment during a, a meeting, that you could be banned. But I'm not real, really keen on banning somebody because then they wouldn't be able to be a part of watching that, commenting on that meeting, excuse me, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
Tom, as being a member of the Communication Committee, you do get communication from the public, not just from the meetings, but you do get some questions asked and you do reply to some of those about city government, whatever they wish, not just from the meeting video.
Oh, definitely. But we get that in through Facebook Messenger, which is like an email platform. And I actually bring that to department heads. If I need to get that question answered, then bring it back to that constituent, or they actually reach out to that constituent.
What about platforms like YouTube Live?
Yeah, we, we have a YouTube channel for the city. We also have a YouTube channel for Marshfield BD Access. We do put all the city meetings on the, on the city's YouTube channel, and you could do live on that.
And does that have comments as well?
No, the comments are, at this point right now on YouTube Live, can be taken, it can be eliminated. So they would not come in at all. There's a button on YouTube to not allow comments on a Facebook Live. Excuse me, YouTube Live, sorry.
Mr. Barg?
Thank you. I probably should have mentioned that Tom was looking at, at YouTube Live. I guess the crux of this, though, is, is why I phrase it the way I did is, you know, do you want to have a, a platform that allows that interaction in? And I got to say, I'm, I said this last time I was up here a couple of weeks ago. I'm all about transparency and I'm all about public participation. I think it's great that folks come out like you guys and express your views at our meetings, and I'd like to see more people. So I'm not trying to squelch that. My, my concern is about a, a real time online forum occurring and, and what concerns that might bring. And it kind of played to some of what the city attorney said. So if there's interest by this body in, in, in going ahead and looking at Facebook Live, we can certainly talk about some of those concerns and whether they can be mitigated. But I, I think, speaking for myself personally, I'm always going to have concerns about an online forum. And I guess maybe that's not the right phrase, but, you know, in real time, you can't, you can't just suddenly say, well, that's bad, I hide that one. That's, that's not, that's misinformation. We take that off. I mean, you're, you're kind of stuck with the interactions going on and you can't really control it. And again, like, I'm not, I'm not trying to sound controlling. Everybody's got a view. I respect what, what Button and Nick and, and Adam said. I just don't know if we want that to be a factor in our meetings, as opposed to being on other city platforms where people can interact and voice their concerns about what you're all doing.
Yes.
Tom, I got a question. Is there, is there a point in time where, so you've got a, we do have a Facebook page for the city, right? So people are commenting on there.
Yes.
Is there a criteria that you would use that somebody says something that you're going to take off?
Yeah, we definitely would have a set of rules that need to be placed on the Facebook page for people to understand that this could be the case, the set of rules that could be created by this body or a set of rules that created by the Communications Committee. We could go over rules on what needs, what, what is allowed on Facebook.
The reason I'm asking that now, and I, it sounds like you, my question was, we currently have a Facebook page, right? I'm not talking about Facebook Live, but the city's got a Facebook page.
Yes.
Are there rules about what can or can't be posted on that?
There are no rules or policies, as I understand, right now of a social media policy intact for the city.
And, and the reason that I'm saying that is because I've been involved in multiple legal issues here over the last several years in regard to social media posts. And every time we pop one of those up, it raises that question, how, you know, what do you allow these to be said? Once you do that, that's a public forum. People are saying it, it's in the context of the city. We're opening that forum up. So you have to be very careful, first of all, on a First Amendment basis, to restrict what's being said. But secondly, you also need to be very careful about, is there something being said that we are allowing to be said on that public forum? It's on our page. It starts to look like the city's endorsed that position, and so that opens that door up. I've, I've seen this before in other, on other social media forums that we've had here. And that's the concern. If, if you're going to do that, I think there needs to be at least some policy, but everybody needs to also understand that there's very significant limitations about what you can, you know, stop from being said. And that includes the potential for misinformation. It includes, you know, derogatory comments. It includes all sorts of different things. And I've been involved in this a number of times where, you know, that becomes, and I'm not even going to say that it wasn't being managed properly, but it becomes an issue in terms of what can be done, what can't be done, what's authorized. We're in a very unique position because we're not like any other employer here. Okay? So that means that our employees also have access to that stuff. And you can't be limiting what they say. So if you open up the, the door for a forum and it's being posted by our employees on our forum, we are responsible for those statements, but also can't control them from saying what they want because it's a public forum. They're also public people as well as public employee. Those are things that need to be thought about when we're doing this. And I've, I've dealt with them. They're complex issue. So the, the, the idea that we have a simultaneous forum, I do think that there's certainly a benefit for that. I think you need to hear from, from citizens. There isn't any question that that's a good thing. And as a matter of fact, I just, bizarre, but I got home late last night from a trial and saw the police department's WDLB. I just happened to get on YouTube and saw that there. And, you know, there was a point in time where I, I really struggled with even the police department having a Facebook page and that interaction. But I sure did learn over a, a, a couple of years now, how invaluable it actually is in terms of law enforcement and being able to do the job. I think that's great, as long as we understand how these things fit together and the responsibilities that go to it because of the fact that we are a government and.
I, I agree that rules need to be made and, and policies on all social media accounts that the city operates. And that can be vetted first with, with staff, city administrator, as well as the Communications Committee, bring it back to this body at that time. Once we do have a set of rules that we feel that's going to work, this would be on all our social media accounts. We need that. I think it's very important. What I can do is do some research with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, as well as other cities, and bring that to staff, as well as bring it to the committee.
Other comments?
If I could just add for a second, we, we have talked at staff level about gathering the social media council, the various departments, and, and then bring them through you, have and look at legality, First Amendment first and foremost. But are we, are the policies such that they're strongly defendable? Now, some of the, some of the Facebook pages we have really don't have a whole lot of controversial stuff going on. But the reality is, the public is engaged, and that's, that's good. That's wonderful. But we got to make sure we're doing things 100% right.
One more shot here.
Yes, go ahead.
Right. And my concern is, is that we do that uniformity, formally across the board as a single government entity with rules that apply to each of those forums uniformly, because that's the problem that's been identified and I've dealt with multiple times over the last few years. And, and that's a concern.
Mr. Agner?
And thank you. Wood County, just a year and a half ago, I believe, implemented a very, very detailed social media policy. It's a good model. It's a great model. And it does precisely what Matt, what, what the attorney is talking about. And that is, it standardizes them across the board and puts the rules and regulations in the thing. That's one. The other thing is, if this thing passes, or if this thing, excuse me, if it fails, I would really, really like to see a uniform set of rules to eliminate some of the things that, that take place. I don't think there's any one of us in, in the room that wouldn't agree that social media is the wild, wild west, and people under pseudonyms and, and those sort of things are free to make ad hominem attacks upon people and ruin reputations and do whatever they want. And even stalk. I mean, there are things like that that can happen. And that, that's, if this thing, if we're going to do this, those rules have to be very strict about, about booting people off of it if they violate those rules. Because we're not going to expose our, our, our appointees, our fellow aldermen, or any of our elected officials to the kind of attacks that would lead to stalking or something, or violence, or provoking violence in any way. So I, I think you, you just can't deny that that's there. You, you can't go whistling by the graveyard here because it's real and it exists and, and it's got to be, it's got to be regulated.
Mr. Fisher?
Can I have the motion, please, read back?
Yep. The motion is to prove discontinuing the use of Facebook Live for city meetings.
And if I may, continue.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason I wanted to have the clerk read that back is I, I feel like we're somewhat getting off topic. The motion is to discontinue Facebook Live, is what I believe I just heard. And now we're talking about policies and different things. So my position is still the same. I appreciate the opinion from the city attorney, but I'm going to vote against this motion because I do not believe we should discontinue Facebook Live. I'm completely fine with comments coming up. I mean, none of us per the policy can view anything. And so I, I think we just need to remember what we're voting on. We're not voting on a policy. We're not voting on further consideration. We're voting to discontinue permanently, from the sounds of it, or at least I would assume that Facebook Live means. And I just can't support that. Thank you.
Buckey?
Yeah, I, I think I need to amend the motion temporarily, to make it temporarily. In other words, we're not going to reactivate Facebook Live until we get the information working. In other words, we're not going to reactivate Facebook Live until we get the information working with the attorney. Because we want to make sure if we're going to go back into it that we're doing things right. So.
So my understanding, your amendment would be to make this a temporary stop.
Yes.
Until additional research and policies can be put in place.
Yes.
All right, so we have an amendment to the motion. Do we have a second to that amendment? Bargender? Any discussion?
Steve? I don't know, if this motion passes, maybe what we could do is kind of further bank the concerns that the city attorneys brought out and check with other cities to see if they found a way to get around or through those. That is information we could bring back to this group.
And Tom, I might.
Yes, go ahead.
And again, I'm not that worried about you working with me, the references that Tom made, that he can get that information and come back with a recommendation. I mean, again, I certainly don't have a problem looking at that from a legal point of view, but I think the question is just, what do you have in terms of safeguards? What's being done out there and is there a policy or something that can do that? I don't have a problem reviewing it, but I don't think it comes down to me. Ultimately, this body can do what it wants, you've heard my opinion on it. So, you know, it's not really my call.
Any other discussion? All right, so we're going to start with a vote on the amendment. So we'll do a roll call vote to amend the initial motion, to make the ban, temporary ban, until further research and potential policy can be provided. Go ahead.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
No.
Rosenbich?
No.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Ferrells?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That amendment passes seven to three. So now we will vote on the motion as it's amended, which is to temporarily suspend until, again, policies can be researched and provided this body for review. Any discussion on that? Okay, vote please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
No.
Rosenbich?
No.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whitzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Ferrells?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That passes seven to three as well, so we'll maintain our temporary ban or our temporary stopping of that until those policies come through. And I'm assuming you'll work with the Communication. Okay. All right, letter Q, discuss lifting the mask requirement for certain city buildings and facilities presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I'll keep this presentation fairly short. Remember, back in the fall, I asked for permission from this body to enact, if necessary, some tightening. And we ultimately think, I appreciate your doing that. We restricted access to this building because we had some people, you know, being quarantined here. We had a lot of public safety concerns during the elections and the tax collections. And it was a tough time for our city and our state with more COVID cases. But we all know that the governor's mandate was struck down on March 31st by the State Supreme Court. The question is, what's next? And a lot of different businesses, organizations, and municipalities are trying to figure out where to go from here. So I thought this was a discussion that should be had by the council. This is obviously a big step when we look at lifting the requirement for wearing masks in this building and other city facilities. I will start out by saying that, as always, the library, Board, Police and Fire Commission, others, Utilities Commission, obviously, have domain over their facilities. So I'm talking about the ones that the city proper and the council oversee. I did a survey of our neighbors, our direct neighbors, Wasa, Stevens Point, and Wisconsin Rapids have no intention at this point of lifting the requirement that employees and visitors wear masks in their public buildings. It's not on the horizon for them yet. But I also did a search or a request out to my city administrators network across the state, and I found that a number of communities, cities and villages are looking at setting a date and saying, okay, well, on April 5th, it was announced that anybody can get a vaccine if they are 16 and over. They don't need to demonstrate health concerns or whatever. So they're using a date and they're saying, look, 45 days from that date or 60 days from that date, we're setting a date saying that we're opening based upon the fact that, at least the belief, that anybody who wanted to get a vaccine could by that time, and therefore it's time to open up and drop that requirement. So I'm bringing this to your discretion today for your discussion and your direction. But I would say that, truthfully, I have kind of a feeling for that second alternative. The idea that maybe not tonight, but maybe at our next meeting, we set a date and say, by some certain date, those who want a vaccine had the opportunity to get it, and maybe we lift the requirement that employees and visitors in our buildings wear masks. But with that, I turn it over to you. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wood County actually lifted the mask mandate at the county buildings. And I was in favor of that. I believe, you know, walking through the courthouse, you will see some employees still wear masks. And I respect their right to do that, but I also respect people's right not to wear the mask. I could go on for hours talking about this, I have a lot of ideas and opinions, but I'm not going to bore you guys to tears. But I feel strongly that everybody has a right to do what they believe is best for their own health. I think having, I mean, we just live in a world now where you're going to see physical distancing. And I'm sure people are going to continue to do that in city buildings. And so I am going to make a motion to lift all masks, or lift the mask mandate on all city property, except obviously the commissions that we don't oversee. Thank you.
Does it affect the date?
Immediately.
Yeah, a motion to lift the mask mandate immediately from all city-controlled city buildings. Second for that? Second by Mr. Bargender? Any discussion? Just Mr. Bargender?
You know, I totally agree with what Adam said. I think it should be left up to the individuals. I mean, when we get in our car, I mean, we can put on a seatbelt or we don't put on a seatbelt. I mean, you know, it's up to us. I mean, if we want to risk getting injured, we don't wear a seatbelt, you know? Sure, we get a $10 fine, but, you know, that's the risk we take. We take risk everywhere we go. I mean, riding a car, walk across the street, walk into Walmart, QuickTrip, any place, there's risk involved. And so I just think that, you know, people that feel the need absolutely should wear their masks. I totally would, you know, agree with Adam there. You know, hopefully we're coming to the end of this and in 60 days, it'll be a mute point anyway. So, but yeah, I think it's a good idea just to let people do what they think is right. Thank you.
Mr. Paschal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I disagree. I think that I wear a mask most places that I go because, not because I'm worried about me, I've had COVID, a mild case of COVID earlier this year. I've got immunity built up, I got my first shot yesterday, so I'm working on improving that antibodies. But I wear it for people who may not have had that opportunity so far. I don't want people to have to suffer unnecessarily because I don't want to wear a mask. I agree with Mr. Barg that perhaps somewhere down the line, perhaps Independence Day would be a good day to shoot for. When more people have had the opportunity to get their vaccinations. I don't intend to wear a mask for the rest of my life, but I think at this point, the headlines in the newspaper this morning were that Michigan is back out of control and they're anticipating that Wisconsin is not. So I want to protect other people.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Mr. Paschal, I really do, that was a very thoughtful statement. The one thing that I think we're missing here, the comments so far about doing away with the mask is that saying, well, if I need the protection, I'll wear it. It's not about you. And that's the problem with this. There has been, since the beginning of time, the need for the tribe, the society to protect itself, to keep, to protect the society as a whole. And that's what the mask is all about, protecting society as a whole, not just the individual who wants to decide whether or not he has the right to wear the mask. I disagree, I disagree with that argument completely. I'm going to vote against this because I think we need to look at our community as a whole. Later tonight, maybe we'll be talking about the health of the community as a whole too. And I think it was referred to in the public comments this afternoon. And I think there were some things that are good points that were raised that need to be said again. So anyway, I am going to be voting against it, thank you.
Any other comments? Steve, what do the staff feel? I mean, we have staff that are on the.
We, you know, back in August, we created, I created, I call it the COVID-19 team, and that's people to start looking at some of the issues we're dealing with in this building. I just felt out that group. I didn't fill out all city employees or even all city hall employees, just to get a sense of what some people think. And, you know, I got some different responses. I think the general, and I hate to take several people and lump them into one vote, but I think the general consensus is that there probably is a day out there coming. You could debate what that day is, but when, and people have had the opportunity to get a vaccine, and if they haven't, then they've chosen not to, and we need to lift the mask requirement. But like I said, even from reading from my other administrators across Wisconsin who are going that direction, they don't necessarily agree on what that is. It's a 30 days, 45, 60, some other time period beyond that. But we ought to come up with some date where we say life goes back to more normal because people have had the chance, if they wanted to, to get vaccinated.
And I think for anybody who's currently watching, I think it's really important to state that what we're talking about is strictly city buildings. We're not talking about businesses, we're not talking about a mask mandate for the city of Marshfield. We're strictly talking, I know that there was, I think, some discussion or some concern at previous council meetings when this was discussed in the past, that suddenly the city passed a mask mandate for the city, citywide. And that's not what we're doing, we're talking about strictly city hall and a couple of other handful of buildings that are under city control as city buildings.
I remember that all too well. I made comments that were misinterpreted that way, and then I went on vacation for a couple of days up north, and my phone was lighting up, and I said, what's going on? And it sounded like I proposed a citywide mask mandate, which I never did. And I still have people who think that, you know, ask, are we going to have a citywide mask mandate? Do we have one now? We've never had one. And as I said earlier, with the State Supreme Court decision, everybody, businesses, churches, organizations, and the city are trying to wrestle with what the best decision is for themselves. We're in the same boat here.
So I'm thinking of this from the perspective that we're making a decision for the employees that we employ as a city, we're not making a decision for the greater Marshfield area. So as I'm looking personally at whether I vote for or against, you know, a removal of a mandate or not, I'm trying, and that's why I asked, what does the staff feel like? I'm trying to make it a safe, comfortable working environment for the people that are having to work here or in those other buildings, more than a citizen. I wear a mask all the time, I'm not worried about it, like Mr. Paschal said. I do it because I know a lot of people that are worried about it. So.
I could certainly do, as a follow-up, do a broader survey of all employees. I didn't see fit to do that at this point. But I do think that, that people realize that there's a date coming. And I'll just leave it at that, and there might be debate on what it is. But the mandate, the mask requirement that we're talking about continuing, it applies to employees but also expectations of citizens coming to visit us. Not that we run them out the door if they're not wearing one, but it's the expectation, the signage, everything points to the fact that you're supposed to be wearing a mask.
I just want to make one other comment really quickly. I did receive an email from a concerned citizen who wants a citywide mask mandate. I really don't know that this particular body would have an appetite for that, but I think it's important for the business community to realize that there are people who do feel uncomfortable going into certain businesses. There are people who are really counting on the adjustments that certain businesses have made regarding takeout, you know, drive up and receive your food kind of situations. And so I would hope that maybe that can continue to be emphasized amongst the business community, even as mask mandates are becoming a non-existent thing. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready to vote.
Fire? Paschal?
No.
Rosenbich?
No.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner? Whitzel?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrells?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Henler?
No.
That motion feels six to four. Four to six, I guess. Do we want to discuss a date or do we just want to make a note to have this come up on the agenda in the future?
Well, I guess, as I take my mask off again for a minute. I think that, I'd like just to know if there's an openness to the idea of setting a date, you know, sometime later this spring or early summer. If there is, we can try and bring back to you something that might be saleable to people. Or if you don't like the premise that we set a date based upon people getting a chance to vaccinate, I'd like to know that too.
Mr. Buckey?
Yeah, I don't see why would we set a date because we don't know what things are going to be like back then. So extended, it's going to be extended as, or going as is, and then if things settle down, then we can make a motion to end the mask mandate. And at that time, we don't have a crystal ball as to when the right date is.
Mr. Fisher?
So Alderman Whitzel, I thought made a good point earlier by asking the question about how staff feels. I know how I feel, but I would like to know how the staff of the city feel when it comes to whether or not they would like to see masks continue in the city building. So that would be my request to, and not that you have to survey every single person, but maybe get a feel for the various department heads. I would assume the department heads have a pretty good idea, hopefully, of how their staff would react to that and bring back some comments. You know, the reality is, more and more people are getting vaccinated. And if people are choosing not to get vaccinated, I think that speaks volumes to possibly some of their feelings on the matter. So if we're going to pick a date, all I'll say is, I think we pick the date sooner than later because I think as the vaccine continues to roll out, you're going to see more and more people make the choice to get vaccinated soon or not get vaccinated at all. Thank you.
Females?
Okay, so you have an idea what? Yeah, I don't know if you want to see this as soon as two weeks from now, but I'd like to bring it back in two weeks with some sense of what our staff thinks about the matter. And I think that's a really good point. Adam, I didn't go beyond a handful of people right now. And then maybe get a little bit more of a sense of what other communities around us, beyond Wasa, Point and Rapids are doing. And maybe we'll see more of what cases, you know, occur in the next couple of weeks. And then maybe we'll make a final, I say a final decision, Tom makes a good point. I mean, you know, COVID has been kind of like this, so it may not be a final, final decision, but maybe in two weeks, we can come to some kind of a consensus of where this is headed.
Thank you. All right, letter R, the discussion of options on vacancy in the position of mayor, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
I feel like I've been up here for a little while, I actually have. I'm just going to outline the three options available to the council with respect to the vacancy of the position of mayor, and it's not rocket science what they are. One is a special election, and if you want to talk about that, the city clerk can maybe outline a little bit how that process works, what the timeline would be to hold that. That would be entirely on our dime though, because there's no other elections coming up anytime soon that involve other jurisdictions. Another would be, what we've done before, I've been here for 10 years, we've done it a couple of times to fill vacancies on the council, and that's to solicit applications from the public. By applications, I mean letters of interest, resumes, things that tell about their background, their experience, their education, and then actually have them come to where I'm standing. And if we did this maybe only a couple of years ago, actually, and talk about why they would be good, why they're interested, and the council just takes a vote at a meeting and chooses the next, in this case, mayor. The third would be to let the position of council president continue to be the, I won't say acting mayor, but to be fulfilling the baseline duties of the position of mayor until the next regularly scheduled election in April of 2022. And when I say baseline duties, I'm talking about running the meetings, as the council president is doing tonight, signing official documents, resolutions, ordinances, proclamations, and maybe a couple of other things that come along the line that would normally be done by a mayor, but beyond that, not fulfilling, you know. by a mayor, but beyond that, not fulfilling, you know, what the typical depth and breadth of the mayor position can be. And that's an option as well. So it's on the agenda tonight as for information only. I'm talking with the council president. He's keenly aware, as I am, that there'll be another representative in District Four here in two weeks that you may want to have weigh in on this important decision as well. But at this time, I would take any questions, comments about any of this.
Any questions for Mr. Barks on this? Mr. Wagner?
Actually, Steve, I'm going to ask if Deb handles this. I see that there's a range that the special election could be held within 62 to 77 days. That looks to me like either the end of June or the 15th of June. Is that the number you're talking about? If we were to decide, if we were to sign an order tonight, theoretically.
That is correct. I based everything.
I can't hear you.
That is correct. I based everything as if you were going to make a decision at this meeting. I was not aware that we weren't going to make one until it was after the fact, but and then it's also contingent if we have to have a primary. So if you do decide to have a special election, the candidates will still have to take out papers, circulate nomination papers, and then those would have to be certified. So depending upon how many run, you would need to have a primary. Otherwise, the soonest the election could have been held was the end of June. Now we're looking at sometime in July, or depending upon when you make that decision.
My original, my original thought was that there was, there wasn't enough time to do it. It appears there's plenty of time to do it. They wouldn't have to get elected and then immediately turn around and file papers to get reelected in 2022, because the papers are available to sign on December 1st. Is that correct?
That's correct. So this position, if you would decide to go ahead with a special election, they would turn around and have to file paperwork again to circulate December 1st.
Well, that clarifies it for me a little bit. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Henler.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of questions I have, it was mentioned before casually, is I like to see the new person come into position for the council, because that person is going to be ultimately involved in making some of these decisions. The other thing is, you know, everything we do has a cost figure attached to it. Deb, can you tell us approximate the cost of something like that?
Again, it would depend upon if we have a primary and an election, but you're looking at anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000. And just so you know, right now, delaying any decision, we already have a cost of around $250 a month, because April 6th was our last election for the election cycle. And with our equipment, we modem all election results to the county. And because we're the only ones holding out, we have to pay the modem charge for Olive Wood County, which is approximately $250 a month. We can't turn off the modem. It would cost us more to turn it back on. So usually after the last election, the county clerk will contact the company to disconnect the modem.
Thank you. But I do like the 250 better than the 15,000 to 20,000.
Yes.
But that's, that's for another discussion with the new council, I would suggest.
Budkey?
Yeah, I tend to agree with with Mr. Henler, although I personally think we should wait until the next election, next scheduled election, let the voters have time to hear from the candidates. And to be honest, we don't even know what we want. I mean, there's other options. You can do a city manager, different things that you can do if you didn't want mayor. So I mean, we got to think this out, and it's getting, it would get pretty late, according to Deb already, in July, if you're doing that. It'd be a very short time, and they're going to have to turn around again. So I personally think we should wait it out.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. President. So going over the three options that you mentioned, the council president could fulfill the minimal duties of the role, is that throughout the entire term until April of next year?
That would be my intent or expectation. Now, you know, you might, you're going to be electing a council president next week, and, you know, there might be a council president who feels more comfortable taking on some of the, some of the things that are sort of ancillary duties. But formally, you know, I think you'd be looking at basically signing the official documents and running the meetings. Beyond that, you know, and I'm not trying to hamstring somebody who takes, who ends up being council president, but that would be the, again, the baseline expectation to get us through to April 2020, 2022, I'm sorry.
I'll just add, I, my opinion's probably not going to change on this, but I would, with the answer to that question, I would probably wait until the April election next year and have the mayor be elected by the people at that time and have whoever is the council president, that election's next week, correct?
Yeah.
So whoever gets elected council president will fulfill the role for a year until the mayor can be elected. Thank you.
Mrs. Barrows?
Thank you, President. I was going to also say, I think it's too quick of a turnaround time to try to have a special election, because that is true that they would have to just turn around and take papers out in a few months from now. And I don't think that that's probably worth spending the extra money. The thing that I am most curious about is hearing the option of doing away with the position of mayor and switching to a city manager type of government. It can probably get somebody to check into that and present some of that information to us. I've heard that tossed around by quite a few people, actually, in the community have suggested that or have asked that question, and I didn't know the answer, so if we could get, get some information on that type of government.
Okay. Anybody else with any questions or comments? Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, I'll defer to Hap on this one. There's been a couple of comments about maybe changing the form of government. I think that would require a change in the charter ordinance, or become a charter with that. Would that require a referendum?
Yes, because we've gone through this before. It would only require a referendum if somebody would file a petition. So it would take a charter ordinance. It would go into effect until 60 days after approval pending any appeal.
Petition to file or referendum.
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing I mentioned a little while ago, that we want to talk about the health of the community. The truth of the matter is this community needs to be healed. And the longer we delay that healing, I think the worse off we are. And that's why I'm going to, well, I agree also with Mr. Henler that we, and also Budkey, that we should probably wait until the new council is seated and talk about it then. But I think, I would like to see that. I would like to see that election held as soon as possible, as soon as reasonable, so that we have some mandate, somebody with a mandate one way or the other, that can help lead the city and perhaps lead the council, bring peace to the council also. So that's, that's why I'm, that's why I'm supporting it the way I am. Thank you.
Paschal?
Thank you. I just would agree with my friend, Mr. Heller back there, and with several comments here, that I think that this should be a position that is chosen by the people. And so I would look for either a special election, or if that's not feasible, an election in the spring.
All right. We're looking at taking action, as was mentioned, once the new council has been put in place. So it would be two weeks from tonight. A week from tonight would be the organizational meeting. So I guess we'll put that on the agenda then for further discussion and action to be taken in two weeks. Yes, Barks?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. I guess I don't know what you want from me between now and then in regard to any research and evaluation of the council manager form of government, because I mean, I'm aware in my association that there are a number of communities that have that. I'm not highly familiar with necessarily all the intricacies of them, and I'm not sure if I will be in two weeks or not, but I can certainly give it a good shot. I want to know if you want a piece of that, or if you just want the three options that have been laid out this evening.
Any thoughts, questions on that?
Doesn't look like you're going to get an answer on that.
I'll put out something that talks about it and explains how it works, and, you know, some illustration as to what the differences would be between that form of government and what we do here currently.
Okay. No further discussion on this, then we'll move on to the next item, and we'll look for this on the agenda in two weeks. Letter S, discuss meeting dates for CIP work sessions on April 29th, May 13th, and May 27th, all starting at 6:00 PM, presented by Steve Barks, city administrator.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, we go into our third year under the new approach with the CIP, which is sort of staff-driven and putting it together, and then bringing it to the council to walk through the various proposed projects and the timelines for those. It's a good work session environment. Last year, we had, I think, four work sessions. We had a lot of good discussion about certain issues like vehicle and equipment replacement and some other things. I think it's more likely to be maybe only two, but we'll see. We definitely want to get all the issues on the table. It's our five-year blueprint for spending, so it's an important document for the city. And we would propose the 29th of April, and the 13th of May, and if the third one is necessarily the 27th of May, these are all Thursdays, they would all be held at 6 o'clock here in this building. The first one would largely be just staff going through the projects, answering questions about them, and then hopefully by the second meeting, or at least sometime in the second meeting, we'd be talking about prioritizing what can fit in, how much we can afford to borrow, make some of these priorities occur. But I'd be looking for a motion to approve those dates if they work in people's calendars.
Wagner?
Motion to approve those dates, seconded by Mr. Budkey. Any discussion? S, Mr. Rosenbich?
I will be unavailable until tonight.
There seems to be a lot of time between these meetings, two full weeks between each meeting. I recall that being the case in the past.
Yeah, I think we did that. The premise is that we have time for staff follow-up. I mean, if you think about last time, there were a lot of good questions and concerns raised about, like I said, the vehicle and equipment replacement programs. And that gives time for staff to actually dig in, talk to those department heads, and come back with something real. You can tighten it up if you want, but that's, that's the reason for that separation.
Budkey, you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Rosenbich, maybe we could go with the first two. Like Steve said, in past history, we get done in two, but if we don't, then maybe we could change that date, Steve.
Well, the one, the one you have a problem with is the first one, though, right?
The first one, I.
Oh, the first one, I'm sorry.
Just the first one is the only I have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was the whole one.
Do what you wish.
Well, we have a motion right now to approve those three dates, barring any kind of a amendment to change a date.
Budkey, looks like you want to.
Well, I think it's, I think it's key for Mr. Rosenbich. You've never been involved with this before. I don't.
I was last.
Last year?
I was involved. It's very interesting, but I just have a prior commitment that night.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to work with you.
I don't remember it being so early. I don't remember it being the very first meeting after the new council came into play.
It was in the May. You're right, it was in the May. The other option, and I'm glad to move the meeting to whatever works for you, if it works for this body, is the first one is largely presentations, and so we're going to have it on, on, you know, YouTube and all these other places. You could look back to the website if you want to watch it. And that's not as good as being here. So if you guys want to, if you want to move it back and say the very first one will be May 13th and the second on the 27th.
I'll make that, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Make that motion to just eliminate April 29th and go with the May 13th and May 27th, and then we could add if we do.
All right. So we have a motion to amend the dates by removing April 29th and sticking with the 13th and 27th, seconded by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion on that? Mr. Fire?
I won't be here on the 27th. I, for reasons that we got business after 5:00 at the Legion on May 27th, and I'm going to be very busy that day.
Okay.
If I don't know on this week, we would have scheduled it different, but it is scheduled for the 27th.
Another thing that I guess I'm kind of wondering, you have these as Thursday dates, and I understand that desire to have a lengthy time to go through these things. Would Monday or Tuesday after one of the committee meetings?
Yeah, we've done that before with budget meetings, where we've said that the finance budget personnel meets at 5:30, and then at 6 o'clock or whenever that meeting's over, we go into it. That way, half the body would already be here. I mean, that's an option with either Board of Public Works or Finance.
And also would then make sure that at least half of us are already present.
True.
This is something that we, we have a motion, we have to take action on, but there's also another individual that isn't here identifying potential conflict dates. So at this point, we do have a motion to amend, removing the 29th and maintaining the 13th and 27th. I guess we can start with that. Motion, amend, and then we can go to whatever motion we have left after that's done. So let's do a vote on that motion to amend by removing the 29th.
Fire? Paschal?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Abstain.
Wagner? Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have it amended. Now we'll look at it, I guess, a vote whether we want to approve those dates now as amended. Any discussion on that before we take a vote? All right, go ahead and vote.
Fire?
13th and 27th are the current dates. I won't be here on the 27th.
So you're voting no?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Fire voted no. Paschal?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Abstain.
Wagner?
Yes.
Whittle?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Budkey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
That motion passes. Seven to two with one of.
Yep.
Okay. Letter T, request to approve the appointment of Chris Golden, 309 West 27th Circle to the city's plan commission, filling a vacant position, the vacant position of Kathy Banks that expires in 2022. We had a resignation effective immediately, so we're looking, and there is a meeting in a week. That's why there's a desire to potentially suspend the rules and provide this appointment. Mr. Henler, what's your motion?
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
We do it all at once?
We need a motion to suspend first.
We'll start with the suspend the rules. So we have a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Henler, seconded by Mr. Paschal. Discussion? Yes.
I serve on the state planning commission. I have a question. Should I abstain, or can I vote on this?
You can vote.
I can vote.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, vote, please.
Henler?
Yes.
Budkey?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosenbich?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
All right, so with the rules suspended, then looking for a motion to approve by Mr. Wagner, seconded by Mr. Paschal. Discussion? Mr. Wagner?
I know, I know the family. I'm strongly in favor of the appointment. Thank you.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Payshel. Discussion? Mr. Wagner? Microphone.
Yeah, yeah. I know the family, I'm strongly in favor of the appointment, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vote please.
Henler?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Witzel?
Abstain.
Wagner? Bargander? Rosendich?
Yes.
Payshel?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
That motion passes. Letter U. Adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Chapter 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, and that's claims for unlawful tax, as well as litigation involving personal property tax claim. Additionally, closed session under Wisconsin Statutes, Chapter 19.85, Sub 1, Sub F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data for specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where power B applies, which is, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, and 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral and written or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, and this is specifically review complaints filed against two members of the Fire and Police Commission. We have a motion to go into closed session. Mr. Payshel and Mr. Rosendich? Pro-call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Payshel?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Barrows?
Yes.
Budke?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Take five.
Certainly, we're looking for a motion to direct the city attorney to provide a legal analysis of the complaints that were filed and places on the common council agenda of April 27.
We have a motion by Mr. Wagner, second by Mr. Handler. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Witzel?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Handler?
Yes.
That motion passes. I will relinquish the chair then. Disappoint for the other items. Mr. Buttke.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, next on the agenda would be the agreement with the Marshfield Clinic, Deb?
Yes, so we'll be looking for a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Marshfield Clinic, Inc., subject to the city attorney's review of the circumstances of the settlement.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Mr. Bargander. Comments, questions?
We will do that. We will do that separate. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Handler?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Witzel?
Abstain.
Wagner?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Rosendich? Paschal?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Okay, next, Deb, about the claims. Please read those.
Certainly. I'll be looking for a motion to deny the claim for refund under Wisconsin statute 74.35, recovery of unlawful taxes filed by Marshall Clinic, Inc., for parcels 3303231, B as in boy, and 3303233, and that is for personal property. And then they also have one for, I'm sorry, that was for real estate. Then we have one for personal property, and that's a count P as in Paul, 330870, and direct the city clerk to mail a notice of disalliance of claim by certified or registered mail. Motion by Mr. Wagner, second. Mr. Fire. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Paschal?
Yes.
Rosendich?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Wagner? Witzel?
Abstain.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrows?
Yes.
Buttke?
Yes.
Handler?
Go ahead.
Tom, did you want to finish, or?
Well.
Go ahead. Is it on the agenda?
It is, it will be. Mr. Chairman, I think, given that Mr. Bargander's last meeting is now, I would like him to have the honor of proposing.
In just a moment. First, I'd like to see if there's any suggested items for future agendas.
Yeah.
Mr. Barg?
It's not really an item of future agenda. I'm hoping the city attorney will give me grace on this, but just to remind you about the next meeting date, which is next Tuesday, what's going to happen, we've done this the past few years, JL will be at 5 o'clock, 5:30 will be finance, budget, personnel, 6:15 is the organizational meeting where you'll be the oath of office for those newly elected, plus the appointments, and then 7 o'clock after that will be plan commission. I just wanted to walk through that sequence real briefly before we left.
All that out of order.
It's out of order. Any other suggested items for future agendas? I believe there was some desire, and I don't know if this was clearly stated, but some desire to have the discussion of the mask situation at the next regular business meeting, so the 27th. Mask, government building, discussion of the government building mask mandate in two weeks. So I want to make sure that we for sure had that. All right, then, Mr. Wagner, you had a suggestion that Mr. Bargander take action at the next item?
Yes, honor, give him the last shot, it was his last day.
Bargander?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bargander to adjourn, second by Mr. Buttke. We are adjourned. Motion by Mr. Bargander to adjourn, second by Mr. Buttke. We are adjourned.